Here we will, uh. No.
She texted that said that she wasn't got more.
Oh.
You ready?
Ready.
Okay, we will call to order tonight's meeting, October twenty first, twenty twenty four, at six oh one P M. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Mayor Nofolda.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Hibbert, absent. Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
If everyone would join us for the pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Murphy will lead us, followed by Councilmember Dobie with the invocation.
Please place your right hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, it is always a pleasure to come before you and seek your guidance, especially when making any sort of decisions for our small but marvelous city of Los Alamos. I thank you for our first responders. I thank you especially for our military base, for our P D, and for our firefighters. I thank you that some of them are coming home. A lot of them are healing wonderfully after different injuries that were sustained during the fires, and I'm grateful, and I would like to publicly express that gratitude. I ask specifically for wisdom for this evening, for grace, that we would remember why we are here, that it is to do the business with all the excellence that we have for the betterment of our community, for our residents, our businesses, and even those that travel through. I thank you for the good that will come out of this meeting this evening, in Jesus's name, amen.
Okay, tonight, we're gonna move things around a little bit. We're gonna start with item C, a presentation by Officer Navarro, providing an update on the K nine pro- program. Officer Navarro?
Oh, mic too. Make you more nervous. That's fine. Just, uh. Okay. Okay, I have videos in there. Okay. Here, Foose?
Hey, everyone. This is K nine Elvis. I'm just gonna give you an update of what we've been doing for the past, I'd say, eleven months, uh, of the program and a quick update. And what we have done. So, um. So, the purpose and the goal for the K nine program. So, it began in November twenty three with the goal of enhancing public safety and supporting patrol operations. Since then, K nine Elvis has been actively involved in numerous significant calls, contributing to successful outcomes in various spaces. So, when we first got K nine Elvis, this is someone on the left, you can see the progress he's made to the picture on the right. When we first got him, he was about sixty pounds, and he is currently, I wanna say eighty-five pounds. So, K nine Academy, Academy that we went to, he went to six week, tiny weeks only two hundred forty hours, covering obedience, detection of surrogates, apprehension. During the academy, I also went out and spoke to him in German, so he understands German. Here's a video of us simulating me getting attacked, and that's a decoy there. So, these are something that K nine Elvis would do to protect me and protect the safety of the community. The video down here simulates decoy trying to get to a gun, and K nine Elvis needs to act early before getting to the gun and shooting off. So, so, these are so many things that we did in these academies. So, after the K nine academy of six weeks, we enrolled into Narcotics Detection School, and he is trained to detect methamphetamine, heroin, fentanyl, cocaine, and N D M A, also others. So, here, he's trained to detect odor, and when I know he's on odor, he'll sit down. That's his trained ability to figure out, okay, he's on odor, and if you see there, there's someone hiding, and I believe that odor there is methamphetamine. And that was also two hundred forty hours, six-week program. So, some local calls for service, uh, you just see here. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Newport Beach, Fashion Avenue, you know, that we're gonna have came to put the tourists. The suspects ended up fleeing to the city of Cypress. I happened to be at work that day. I came in early to go to the gym, and I heard a call over there, and being that we're in the city of Cypress, I heard it down there. And he assisted with locating other suspects and doing a building search or residential search of one of the houses that he potentially buried. Uh, the end result of this call was they all got apprehended, or they all were detained and, you know, certain, certain types of actions. And this is a picture from the weekend here. So, before, uh, after we got out of the police academy, our first call for service was a, we call it helping crime stop. So, if you guys know, we have help car embers in the city. It catches stolen vehicles that come into our city. Um, this was, I believe, was December twenty fifth, it was in the morning, five thirty A M. And one of our officers located the vehicle at a shuttle gas station. And mind you, this is my first call with him, and I responded to the scene, and at first, I was a little nervous, like, oh, I didn't know what I was doing. But he did, you know, based off the training. So, I pulled him out, and I immediately told him to bark. We started barking. All suspects ended up complying, and we safely took him to the custody. Fast forward, um, a couple of months. So, the four suspects in, in that, in this call were juveniles. Fast forward to a couple of months back, uh, a couple of months ago, we learned that a suspect, one of the juveniles that we arrested, stole another vehicle. And I don't know if you guys heard of the accident happened where a creator stole a vehicle. He got hit by a semi truck. That was actually the kid that we arrested, and he ended up passing away, you know, on the public show. So, I mean. I wanna let you guys know that when we did stop these kids, I asked each one of them, why didn't you guys run? And they told me, well, you guys had a dog that was scared to run. So, it all worked out. So, another local call for service or call that I had was, uh, Sil Beach had a grand theft that occurred at one of their retail stores, I believe it was Kohl's. And again, I was here at work early, going to the gym, and during this call, come back. And. Let me get into the story. So, these five individuals from Kelly County, they came to Sil Beach from the inside. The first call for service that Sil Beach stopped was. They committed a robbery at a local liquor store over there. Second call was they did a armed robbery, um, against two tourists. They stole their wallets, purses, vehicle keys, and cell phones. So, I jumped over there, and by the time I got there, all suspects were at heavy hardships. They asked me and K nine Elvis to do a harmful search, which he's gonna do for the outstanding firearm that, uh, the suspects used. I was like, okay, I think we can be able to do that. So, I strapped him onto a long line and told him to search the gun, which the word I use is soup in German. Told him to search, and he found gun and rushed a gun control area where they ran from. So, right here is the gun here, and gun and magazine loaded. Uh, we learned, we later found out the gun was stolen out of the tourist center. So, that was a big crucial piece of evidence for Sil Beach for them to close the case. Another local call for service as far as like narcotics, um, Guardia Police Department, uh, asked for K nine, uh, that's training narcotics. And if you wanna play the video, if you could see me doing an exterior search of a vehicle. With K nine Elvis, and like I noted before, he's trained to sit down when there is presence of odor that he detects. So, you see here, I let him sit the driver's side door seam of the vehicle, and he sits down. So, that gave Guardia Police Department the following cause, he goes inside that vehicle, search the vehicle. In result of that, they found a pound of fentanyl and a pound, a pound of fentanyl. And that, this was, uh, K nine Elvis's first big hit on test porn and narcotics. And they also found additional thirty thousand dollars in cash in the air above person, which is, you know, very successful for K nine Elvis. So, I wanna get into the, a little deployment summary of what we've been doing. So, here's a pie chart of the top twenty-five requesting agencies that I've assisted, um, Cypress being the first of five. So, total deployment, uh, we've had twenty-eight calls for service or assist. Uh, detection deployments are, was eleven, and patrol deployments was seventeen. Total arrests that we've had was eleven, and fifteen people found, so fifteen people surrendered to K nine Elvis here. Mind you, we started in November. I, I went to training for six months for K nine Academy and K nine Narcotics. So, I took up three months of patrol time for us. So, essentially, we were on, we've been on the streets for nine months. And for being, be on the streets for nine months, I think that's, that's pretty good for, you know, have a call to get. More than what I've talked to K nine, other K nine handlers. They said, I'm on a good, I'm on a good pace, and, you know, we're learning a lot. It's just me putting myself out there and, I guess, not be scared to get out of my comfort zone. So, narcotic seizures, um. We've, uh, seized a little over three hundred seventy grams of methamphetamine, and that's just till, till September. And we've seized one hundred three grams of fentanyl, and you know how much fentanyl is a, a big thing nowadays where it could kill, a minute amount of fentanyl could kill, uh, somebody. So, you know, this is a big thing for us. Uh, he surprises me sometimes when, when you locate something. Sometimes you trust him more and trust in his ability that, you know, he is on odor. So, that is, uh, the narcotic seizures that we've had. So, the program in fact, uh, since the start of the K nine program, K nine Elvis has been instrumental in increasing the safety and effectiveness of patrol operations. I feel when I drive out in the city, they see that big K nine sign, and people just drive away because they don't want, they want, they don't want anything to do with this dog. Especially when he's in a vehicle, he starts barking and barking and barking. I can't give him a stop. So, K nine Elvis, uh, his skills have led to successful surrenders, apprehensions, surrenders meaning people, people give up. As far as apprehensions is when he will get a bite, but I, I would take surrenders over bites any day. It takes away paper from my teeth, my caffeine, reliability. So, surrender, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with surrenders. Uh, his evidence recovery and narcotic seizures that would have otherwise been more challenging. Um, there's things that dogs can do that humans can't. They could go in premises, they could sniff out people hiding behind a door. There are those, it's ten, ten thousand times or hundred thousand times better than humans can do. So, for example, just say, chief is cooking spaghetti in his house. He'll pinpoint each ingredient that my chief could put in that spaghetti.
Amazing.
So, looking ahead, uh, the K nine program aims to continue to grow with future plans to expand capabilities such as utilize, um, being utilized at the high school. Um, we know that there, he possibly there is drugs in the high school. I would love to use them over there and mitigate all the drug usage, um, that they could possibly bring to the schools. And, uh, further integrating K nine teams into patrol operations such as utilizing, utilizing on the West Coast drop team, which we both know. And, uh, sorry that the presentation is quite short and bland, but, uh, like, safety guys, uh. I just wanna let you guys know that K nine, K nine Elvis has been a valuable asset to the department and to me. Uh, his contribution has advanced officer safety and successful resolution of complex cases. Uh, I did have a photo up here with him and my kids, but a lot of people always ask me, how is he, how is he with the family? He's best friends with my four-year-old son. They play all the time. Uh, he's in the backyard. Uh, they're just chasing around, chasing each other around. Uh, when my, when my son has so much energy, I tell him to come out to play with him, so they, oh, good, you know. We still have energy at the same time. So, uh, that's it, and I thank you guys. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, next, we have a presentation by the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District to, into the city in recognition of being named the most supportive small city award. And to receive the honor will be Councilmember Dobie, who's a member of the Mosquito and Vector District Board.
All right, well, uh, K nine Elvis is a hard act to follow, but he has left the building, so I'm gonna go ahead and do the presentation here. So, uh, each year, at the beginning of summer, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District embarks on a educational program to tell the people of Orange County about the dangers that mosquitoes can bring. This year, you might have noticed, and probably the last few years, there's a lot of ankle biters around. Those ankle biters can, and can transmit dengue disease, a dengue fever. It's also known as break bone disease, and in the areas where it's well-established, it is the number-one cause of illness in those areas. And what happens is people will visit places, get bit by a mosquito, come home, they start to get sick. The mosquito bites them and then bites somebody else. Then we have what's called local transmission, can be really bad. Um, we haven't had that in Orange County. Thanks in part to cities like Los Alamos for helping us out. They have had local transmissions in Los Angeles and San Diego County, so it is a big concern, and that's why each year, we try to educate people. This year, the city of Los Alamos, with the help of Councilmember and trustee Dobie, they, they knocked it out of the park, you guys. You hit every single thing you could possibly do. And for that, we wanna present you with this certificate of appreciation for your outstanding contribution and level of commitment to improving awareness about vectors and the diseases they carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have the presentation of a commendation to the Los Alamos Code Enforcement staff in recognition of Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Month. For this, we have Director Ron Noda.
Evening, Mayor, members of City Council, and everybody else watching, residents and staff. Um, unfortunately, our code enforcement officers could not be present because they had some prior engagement or they're not feeling well. So, I told them, you know, if you're not feeling well, just stay home. Uh, we'll take this. But, uh, code, uh, code enforcement is a division under Development Services. And so, code enforcement is a Swiss Army tool of our city as they deal with a variety of challenges, including housing, homelessness, sidewalk vending, short-term rental, business license enforcement, graffiti, and illegal dumping, to name a few. Uh, again, they're a valuable resource. They are a Again, they're a valuable resource. They are, a lot of times, you know, when you see a Code Enforcement Officer come up, they're not really business owners, property owners, or residents are happy to see them, but they play a very vital role because they uphold the city's municipal code. And they keep the preservation of our neighborhood, of our community at the top level as we all deserve as residents and as property owners. So again, I just want, again, I apologize they couldn't be here for prior commitments or health, but I do want to recognize them. We have Senior Code Officer Javier Marquez. We have Code Officer Riley Hill. And we have Code Officer Oswaldo, Oswaldo Dorte. So again, I just want to please join the mayor and the rest of the City Council staff in proclaiming October as Code Enforcement Month. Thank you.
If they are watching or if they will watch this at some point, I would like to extend my thank you for their hard work and dedication. Thanks, Ron. Okay, next up, we have Oral Communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. I have two cards. First, we will start with Christine Arf Wedson.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I'm Christine Arf Wedson. I live in Parkwood, Los Alamos. On October fourth, twenty twenty-four, Tonya Dolby posted on her personal Facebook page that John Gabbard, who is a consultant with KB Holmes, was assisting her with her campaign. She was thanking him for helping her campaign canvas and knock on doors for her reelection to District One. Why is this a problem? KB Holmes, who John Gabbard is a consultant for, is the developers for the Lamson Project. And accepting help from a consultant for a company that will have business in front of this council, that is a problem. Twenty-nine days before an election. That's a direct conflict of interest. Ms. Dolby will not be able to be impartial when different decisions have to be made regarding the Lamson Project. I.e. the EIR, the project's final vote itself. So because of this conflict of interest, Ms. Dolby, you need to recuse yourself from any vote regarding any decisions concerning Lamson Project. My next concern is about Measure X. This is a measure designed to disguise, in positive language, different topics of the, in the measure that are in no way a help to this city. First, expanding term limits, possibly deciding that the twelve years starts now, which would give some of the members on the council up to twenty-four years of being a council member. The second item is having concerned citizens, residents of this city, have to register as lobbyists. Are you kidding? Having local residents register as lobbyists as if they have some business in front of this council. They are concerned residents trying to bring forth their concerns about business before this council. And number three, it seems our city manager and staff think it's appropriate to have the city council have no insight, excuse me, oversight over projects up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. No bidding, no advertising. What does this produce? No transparency. This measure in no way benefits the city that you are public servants for. This measure is brought forth by the staff in the council, not the residents. And that's who it benefits, all of you who are here. And you are here for us. We are the voters. You are supposed to be helping us. Measure X is draped in positive gobbledygook terms to disguise what it really is. And I say to you, city council, to give up oversight of projects is you might as well recuse yourself for your duties. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have John Underwood.
Well, good evening, Mayor Nefulba, and members of the council and staff and chief. I'm John Underwood. Some folks know me as a person who has been involved with Lost Out TV for several decades now. I, it's a very rare occasion when I come before you in front of these cameras and at this podium. I would much rather be behind the camera promoting and representing this community, its culture, and its best face forward. But tonight, I have occasion to express my dismay and my disappointment that staff and, and the city has determined that Lost Out TV shall be put on a production freeze and that only repetitive programming from months ago will be aired on the channel, of which I have been monitoring consistently for the last several months. I have tried on many occasions to get different programs on the air. I've even, as, as simple as our much utilized community calendar, which local community stakeholders have utilized over the years on many, many occasions. We have built that bridge with the community. It's taken years to do so. There is a feedback loop there in which we are supported in return. Even that has been frozen. And that's staff's own word. Lost Out TV has been frozen out of event calendar, of production, current production, and of this all-important election cycle that Lost Out TV has been part of since its inception in nineteen eighty-four. And I'm, I'm simply here to say that, yes, there may be, as it was, as it was described by staff, a freeze, a programming freeze on Lost Out TV for the purpose of broader transition and review process. That's fine. Review process is fine. But do we need to darken our longstanding Lost Out TV television operation and restrict the community from current information and access to it in order to do what is basically an administrative process? We've never had this occasion before in Lost Out TV's history. We've always been there to present in an even and unbiased way. Interviews, candidate forums. There are candidate forums out there now that are waiting to go on the production platform of Lost Out TV that have been precluded from doing so in this election cycle. But beyond that, even access to events as benign as, as, as Dios de los Muertos for St. Isidors or events from American Legion seven sixteen. Or I could go on and on naming organizations that have, over time, utilized to great advantage Lost Out TV. What we're talking about here is not just an internal administrative process. You're talking about upending a process that is the public interest and should supersede whatever administrative process may be legitimately at hand and may be quite necessary. But I don't feel we need to darken Lost Out TV to do it in this very critical time. Please, I urge staff and I urge the council to consider expediting the return of Lost Out TV to proper current operational footing and do so before this election cycle has been expended. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And now we have updates from the mayor.
So we have our- Would you mind calling for open oral comments, just in case?
Yeah, I forgot. Is there anybody else that would like to come up to the podium at this time? Nope. Having no one come forward, I'll move on for the updates from the mayor. Trunk or Treat, we will be hosting our thirteenth annual Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach Trunk or Treat presented by the Southland Credit Union. The free event will occur this Saturday, October twenty-sixth, at five P M. to seven thirty P M. at Little Cottonwood Park. The spooktacular event provides, this spooktacular event provides a safe space for families to celebrate Halloween. Guests will have the opportunity to participate in children's costume contests, pick their very own pumpkin, while supplies last, from the Free Pumpkin Patched, sponsored by Southland Credit Union, play carnival games, win prizes, visit Trunks for Candy, shop at vendor booths, jump on moon bounces, ride the spooky train, enjoy the sensory activity area, purchase adult beverages from the Beverage Garden benefiting Los Alamos, the Los Alamos Community Foundation, and more. Families are encouraged to come dressed in their Halloween costumes to enter the ever-so-popular costume contest. Thank you to our event sponsors Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach as title sponsor, Southland Credit Union as presenting sponsor, Wilden Group, Inc., and Grocery Outlet Long Beach Wardlow as gold sponsors. Somebody going to say, someone came to me before the meeting. Was that you? Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. I'd asked the mayor if I could make some comments at the beginning of the meeting because I think it's just that important. As many of you are aware, about a month ago, the, one of the hand crews from OCFA were on their way home after working nine, twelve-hour shifts, I believe, straight. They were in an accident on the toll road. All eight of them were injured. They were all taken to various hospitals and in various stages of trauma. Four of them were released relatively quickly. There were another four that had much more serious injuries and so they were kept in the hospital. One was released a couple of weeks ago. One was taken over to Rancho Los Amigos. And two of them were flown to a rehab center in Colorado that specializes in spinal and brain injuries. The, the hand crew man from Rancho Los Amigos is now home. And the other two are still in Colorado. I wanted to call out one of them especially. His injuries were so severe that he was diagnosed that he would, if you remember Christopher Reeve, he would always be on a breathing tube. He would never be able to walk and that was his, pretty much his new life. He's in his twenties. So that was pretty discouraging. I wanted to bring up, Chief Covey sent this to me today and with the permission of the family. This was our young man who would never be able to walk and would always have to have a breathing tube. This is him today walking a mile. So that's after two weeks of rehab. I, I don't know where your faith is, but to me, this is just a God thing. You can't explain it any other way. The doctors can't explain it. And so I just wanted to share that with everybody. There is still a GoFundMe up because they have a long, long road ahead of them. And so for ongoing medical bills and everything else. But I just wanted to share this with the community because I just think it was a, a big deal in just his resilience and just his spirit of fight. And he's walking after two weeks of being told he'd never be able to walk again. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Prostham. Right now, we have updates from the city staff and City Manager Simmons. I'll turn to you first.
Thank you, sir. And with your permission, I would like to have Mr. Ron Noda give an update on some of the street projects in town.
Yes.
Thank you. Like the City Manager Simmons stated, we have a lot of street projects coming up, whether it's striping or adjacent concrete work on sidewalks. But the one that I really want to highlight is our citywide residential street project, which is about a two-million-dollar project. So it's pretty extensive. It's citywide. It's gonna either slurry seal or what we call a grinding overlay, which they'll actually dig up the street and put new asphalt in on a lot of residential streets and all around the neighborhoods, all around town. There's too many for me to list verbally, but I encourage the residents to go visit the city's website and the My Lost Out Engage platform to see the construction and see the timeline. The project will begin later on this week or early next week, and it should last. They're trying to get it out and done before Thanksgiving. So everyone cross their fingers that the weather holds up because they can't do it with rain or even if it's like really misty out and stuff because the slurry seal has to have a certain temperature to apply. But again, there's a lot of things that will be going on and I just want to, again, make sure that residents go to the city's website or the My Lost Out Engage platform to check it out, to see which streets are affected. And I just want to make sure that street sweeping, depending on the street and the timeline, will be affected for that one week as the street's being worked on. But trash pickup will not be affected at all. So again, parking will be affected. And if your street is going to be affected, they will place no parking signs seventy-two hours before the actual construction. So again, saying it repeatedly sound like a, a broken record, but go visit the city's website and the My Lost Out Engage platform. Thank you.
And sir, I'd actually like to turn it over to the chief to discuss some of the, we've had some questions about security that have come up recently that I think he would be best suited to address. Chief?
Thank you. So we are going to be ensuring that employees of the city are exercising a sense of confidentiality as it pertains to information that is contained within the city's databases. And in that process, if we were able, if we were to find out that an employee failed to protect the confidential information, that they would then be subject to discipline up to and including termination. So we just want to ensure everyone that is on any committees or other employees within the city that we take seriously the matter of keeping their information confidential.
Thank you, chief. Also, just to recap, also, the city was subject to a cyber attack earlier this week. I'm happy to report that all of our critical systems are back up and running. And I have to hand it off or take my hat off to the I T team and then to some of the planning efforts that the management, namely Ron Noda, has undertaken here in the last couple of years in order to really beef up our internal security. Within minutes of our team recognizing a larger volume of traffic than normal, they were able to quickly shut down and isolate accounts, being able to bring all of our critical systems offline in order to separate them out from the different areas where the hackers had attacked. We were also able to restore service of all those vital systems within seventy-two hours, which, as you know from looking at some other cities, there have been places where they have been down for months. So again, this is something that came out of council action about two years ago where the city council appropriated a significant amount of money for us to really go in and do an audit of what exactly our internal security looked like and how exactly we can ensure that we put ourselves in the best position to be able to defend ourselves against these kind of attacks. these kind of attacks. With that, I'd also like to turn it over, actually, to Emeline Noda to recap some of the more recent events, but also to recognize one of our very, very special team members. Ms. Noda?
Thank you, City Manager Simmons. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. It is my pleasure to announce our employee of the quarter for the entire city, Recreation Manager Jennifer Sassoia, who's sitting here in the audience, trying not to be embarrassed. Jennifer is one of our recreation managers, and she is extremely dedicated to the city and to the community. She supports our team in every way possible. She keeps us organized and on task and provides excellent internal and external customer service. She anticipates the needs of the department and always looks out for the best interests of the city. She is a professional in every way and a great example to the team of an outstanding mentor and leader. Most importantly, she keeps me grounded. She is a cheerleader for our team and our community. Just today, this afternoon, she helped support and lead with Recreation Coordinator Angel Hernandez, Hernandez, the Pals of Los Al... New event sponsored by the Los Alamos Community Foundation. This event is for families with additional needs and disabilities and provides a sports rotation with volunteers from Los Alamos High School, Girl Softball, Girl Soccer, and ASB. Our Police Department and Development Services Department team helps support the event, and this is just one excellent example of what Jennifer brings to our city. She creates partnerships like this with our school district and so much more. And I invite the mayor and council to come and take a picture with Jennifer.
9th. Our sponsors were Memorial Care Long Beach, Sir Speedy, and Printmasters, and we had a sold-out crowd of 80 participants at the community center. The day was filled with inspiring sessions, small group discussions, as participants were able to learn and gain new connections in the community, making it another successful annual conference. And two neighboring cities attended and are using our conference as a model to bring to their own communities, so we are very excited about that. Thank you.
That's all that for tonight, sir.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the warrants. Because we had that cyber attack, I understand that we didn't get them ahead of time as we normally do. So what we'll do for today is if there's any questions from council, just go ahead and address your... Or ask your question. It'll be jotted down by City Manager Simmons, and we'll have an answer for you prior to the next meeting. So with that, any questions regarding the warrants?
I'll move it.
All those in... It's a roll call.
Please.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Mayor Nofolda.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie.
Yes.
Councilmember Hibbard.
Absent.
Councilmember Murphy.
Since I haven't had the usual time that I do to review the accelerated warrants, I'm just going to say no until I do have that time to review it and have any further questions that it can be addressed at the next meeting.
So with three...
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay. Now we move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar can be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Is there anybody that wants to pull any items? Having...
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Can they... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Now we have the discussion item. This was for the electronic delivery of financial information. And I know that this was what Councilmember Hibbard had requested. It would be... It would be my preference if we just had this on for next month. I don't know what the procedure is for that or if you guys want to move forward. How do we...
As the mayor, you can just request that the item be moved to the November meeting.
I've requested the item be moved to the November meeting.
Wonderful.
Okay, council announcements. Start with Mayor Protem Shelley Hasselbrink.
Okay, it was a busy month. Went to the community center grand opening, was absolutely spectacular. It's beautiful, and I know our seniors loved it because they know that's gonna be their new home for their senior club. It was just very, very well done. Congratulations to everybody involved on getting that done on time, on budget, and with grants. It's always the trifecta. I attended the Rotary Wine Tasting. That was a lot of fun, very well attended. I did have to donate a little bit in their live auction to support the cause, but that was fun. The Elevate Women's Conference was great. It was extremely well attended from women of all ages and backgrounds. Had a really good time there. Attended the State of the District for the school district, and they are doing very, very well. They've got a tremendous leadership team, and things are going very, very good for them. I worked the taste for Los Al... And that was also, once again, very well attended, lots of food. I think there were 40 restaurants there represented, and everybody had a great time. And then I was able to, with Councilmember Dobie, speak to a Girl Scout troop out of Weaver Elementary. Fun fact, I didn't know this, that there is a Girl Scouts house down in Seal Beach, and it's open for any Girl Scout troops that they can meet there, they can have functions there, they can even have overnighters there. So we were able to go and speak about the process of what a city council does, and the leaders were great because they actually set up a mock election where the girls went and they broke up into groups. They presented a project to myself and Tanya. It was either a park or it was, you know, something one of their dreams. And these are third graders. So they made their poster and everything, and they presented it to us, and then we chose the one that the voters would be voting on. So then the girls turned around and filled out their voter registration card, and then they got their ballot, and they got to vote, and then they got to see the results of the vote. We also explained our reasoning on why we picked a specific project, and they were just so excited that we let them know it's never too early to get involved in the process. And I encouraged all of them to go home to their parents, have them open up their ballot, and talk to them about it because that's the only way you learn. And if you start at third grade, when you turn 18, it's just an automatic, you're gonna vote, and you're gonna be educated enough to vote. So that was really a lot of fun. I did attend the League of California Cities Conference this last week with, I don't know, a few thousand of my favorite people. Went to a number of sessions, which was really good. I also have copies of all the handouts from all the sessions. I think there were about 45 sessions. Could not attend all of them, so I've given all those handouts to the city manager, and he's gonna distribute them to council and staff. But they had some really timely topics. And then yesterday, I went to the San Isidore dedication of their hall. This was the lady who, when San Isidore wanted to buy the church from the archdiocese, they didn't have the money and they didn't qualify her for a loan because they were fairly new. And this lady stepped up and lent them the money, and they've been making payments on it ever since. She passed away in December, and in her will, she forgave the rest of the loan. So they named the memorial hall after her. All of her family was there, including her 100-year-old sister. Holy cow, she looked good. And so it was just really fun and just to see the heritage and the people that were there, that what San Isidore has meant to them, just being in this community. So that was great. I want to remind everybody that Saturday is Trunk or Treat over at Little Cottonwood Park. I call it a dress rehearsal for the big night of Halloween, and all the kids come and they get all their precursor candy, and it's just... It's just a lot of fun. So I encourage everybody to be there. I believe it starts at 5:30?
5:00.
5:00, over at Little Cottonwood Park. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Noda.
All right, I had my regular and obligatory board meetings for ACCOC and OCAG, but then I also got to do some much more fun stuff. Now, the board meetings are fun. Don't get me wrong, they're fun. But the grand reopening of our community center was absolutely spectacular, and our senator even came to help us do our ribbon cutting. I think it might be because her name is on the building, but she came out and expressed again how honored she was to be able to help our small but mighty city of Los Alamos with the grant money that we use to fix old Bessie up. I also attended the Lafe State of the District, and I love being reminded of how absolutely amazing our school district is, but then also how determined they are to never become complacent. They're always looking for the next and greatest thing for our students and our families, and I admire that, I honor that. I also attended our Elevate Women's Conference. We had some exceptional keynote speakers, and we even had a panel session this year. And all of the regular sessions, I appreciate how thoughtful... Really, it's Emeline, it's her baby. She is when selecting the different topics for us women to come together and gather on. And I had the distinct pleasure of doing two Girl Scout tours. So I did the one with Ms. Shelley, but the other one was kind of a last-minute tour of the civic center, which, which, I'm gonna be honest, I've never done it. So I was just making it all up. So what we did, and they were third graders? Third graders. PD gave them a beautiful tour that lasted 40 minutes, so by the time they got to just me, we had already been cooking about an hour and a half. So we held a mock meeting. And I had one for each seat up on the dais. We had a city manager, a city attorney, a chief of police, a city clerk. We had some people sitting over to the side because realistically, this is a collaborative community effort. This is a staff and council effort. It's not just council member whomever. And I was most impressed because even after being here for an hour and a half, by the time we were almost done, the children were taking notes on what we were doing in our council meeting. So that was... That touched my heart. And to just share a little bit at the troop house with Mayor Protem Hasselbrink, what I would like to point out is how these babies, and they're all babies, you're younger, me, you're a baby. They each had a project. There were four different projects. They had teams of three or four, and they put all their little heart into these projects, but there could only be one winner at the end. So I'm watching their little faces because we're deliberating on which one we're gonna pick, and we ended up picking one that would encapsulate all of the projects eventually because, you know, you've got a phase one and a phase two and a phase three. And I saw one baby, it looked like she was near tears, and I was like, listen, what everyone should understand is this is always going to be a group effort, and just because it doesn't look like you won, there's always a lesson. There's something that you can take, and that's your perspective. So what really ministered to me was they selected our suggested project unanimously. All, you know, 13, 14, 15 girls, all agreed on the one project. So I, you know, I pulled the little girl's mama aside. I was like, you know what? Let her know that that's amazing because there are adults that can't do that. What that baby did was profound. She pushed past how she felt about not being selected and saw the broader picture. So that's why one of my favorite things is going to the troop things. You need a badge, come talk to Ms. Wendy, and she'll deploy. Yeah, I think that's... Thank you for letting me share.
Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I attended several of the same events that Councilmember Shelley Hasselbrink... I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Shelley Hasselbrink has attended, so I won't go into too much other than the... They were really exciting. There were Rotary Club's Wine and Dine Event. It's always great and very proud to be a Rotarian myself. We have a strong commitment to service and leadership. Chelsea knows. Just like I said, we... I attended the reopening of the community center. I attended the dedication of the Floriza Martinez Memorial Hall. And I also attended the State of the City for Cypress, which was really nice. You know, with our neighboring city, we do work collaboratively with them, so it's great to hear what they have going on in their city. And that is about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I love going last because you guys cover everything. The only thing I will say is that... Because I was gonna ask the same thing, but Mayor Protem Hasselbrink beat me to it. I think you really should get a hold of the presentations, the content of the presentations from the League of California Cities. Not all topics will be of interest, but they had some really good topics there and was pretty informative. So with that, we will move on to closed session. And at this time, city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council will now recess into closed session to discuss item 13A as listed on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
...